Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 2nd, 2021. Thank you all for being here. We have two agenda items on our, on our agenda tonight. One, item number one is Race and Equity Task Force, a quarterly update. And item number two is a homeless navigation update on our homeless navigation program. And as we, as is our, our policy, we will start with the public's right to speak. If there's any member of the public here who would like to speak on agenda item number one or number two, now is your opportunity to do so. I don't have anyone signed up to speak at this time, but if you haven't signed up and would like to speak, this is your opportunity. And I would invite you to the podium. So, and we also will have an opportunity in the Zoom format, and I'm going to turn to our clerk and see if we have anyone signed up to speak on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, no one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay. We'll give it just another second or two to see if anyone comes to the podium. And I don't see anyone, so we'll close our public's right to speak. And we will go to agenda item number one. That is our Race and Equity Task Force update. And I'll go to our city manager to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling, our Assistant to the City Manager, is here to introduce the item.
Hello. Good evening. Tonight, we have our Race and Equity Task Force co-chairs Jenny Snell, Terry Gale, and Jeff Richards, who are going to be providing an update to City Council regarding the task force.
Okay. Take it away whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Is this working?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good evening. We have some exciting things to talk over with you this evening, and so we're just sort of going to go through and each of us will take turns telling you about our progress. But we have to start this off first by saying a big thank you to you all for the quick movement on, on getting our task force formed. A big thank you to Mary Ann for keeping us on task and excellent notes. And we also want to say a big thank you to all of the departments that have presented to us so far. It's been wonderful and informative, and we've learned tons already. We also have wonderful guidance from Dr. Duanita Tyler Mosby from the Equity Project and Monica Williams also from Equity Project. And so we want to say a big thank you to them because they are quite a resource and have given us so much great guidance. So those are, we just wanted to open with that and say a sincere thank you. We, we wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a timeline of how things have gone so far, and then we'll get into some of the things that we've really, that are, we're starting to really roll on and get traction on. Our first few meetings, you know, this is a group of folks that are very passionate, that are passionate about Wheat Ridge, passionate about what we're tasked with working on. But we, a lot of us hadn't met yet, so we were kind of getting to know each other and at the same time, really, you know, knowing that we need to get going quickly. So, you know, there's a lot of new, new things in the air. Dr. Tyler Mosby did just a fantastic job of introducing us to equity work, what it means to be on a task force, what it means for our city, and what it means for us during, you know, being on the task force. And so our first few meetings were going through that with her and really learning a ton from her, lots of good guidance. And then, let me see, let me make sure I don't want to miss anything. We really have used her as a resource throughout this, and she's definitely, we're thankful to have her, so thank you for that. During the next few meetings, we received several great presentations from city departments, including communications, so city communications, the Let's Talk program presented to us, and a really compelling presentation from our city attorney that really is helping us learn things that we never even knew about the city and processes, and also ways that we can later on use those resources if we have questions or if we need to dive into something more. So lots of presentations right there at the beginning, but it's exactly what needed to happen because it was just, you know, we had lots to learn and lots to get working on. So now I think, Terry, you want to take over the next?
So we began to ditty out and start working in smaller groups to, to start breaking down the charter. So that'll be coming surely. We'll start dissecting that and going through it and putting it back together again. You'll hear Dr. Tyler Mosby's name a lot for the next five minutes or so. Once again, under her guidance, and I'm going to refer to Race and Equity as RE, we're looking at everything through an RE lens. Most places that I go to, most places that we all go to are now starting to look at things through an RE lens and sharpen up on their exposure to it and get comfortable with it and actually really challenging themselves to actually look at their work and the way they do things through an RE lens. And finally, the group that we've assembled, thank to, thank again to you guys for allowing us to do this, but we feel like we have a really strong group. Everyone's thoughtful and passionate and really, really want to do really meaningful work, and we're all vested in it. So we hope that once everything is done, you guys take everything to heart, not that you haven't, and not saying that you haven't, but we want to know that, because this is, I've told people before, I don't think, and maybe I'm wrong, I said before, had COVID not happened and we weren't stuck in our houses, I don't know that we would have gotten this, I don't know that this would have gotten that much traction, right? We were stuck in our house, we had to watch TV, do something to kill time, and I think now everyone, for the better, has taken a hold of this thing, and it's a good thing. So we want to know that our proposals, once they're introduced, something, they go somewhere. You take them somewhere. Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so the last thing we have is questions. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Okay. Questions from council. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the leaders of the Race and Equity Task Force. First off, when I was reading in the memo the amount of time that you got, I already knew it was going to be a lot of information to get downloaded, but the amount of time that has already been invested into where, into where you guys are, I certainly appreciate, and I hope you'll tell the entire task force, I certainly appreciate all that time. I understand that it's a lot of work, and so thank you for that. One thing, question that I had was that, Terry, you were talking about the charter breakdown. However, in the memo, it highlights the, it says that their first three areas for review are in bold, and so it was court and judiciary, education, and the police department. Will these be happening congruently, or will it be the city charter with an eye to those as, as the focus?
Sure. Yeah, so those will be happening congruently. We took all of the subjects. We broke the charter itself down by subject, area, and then we also added areas that each of the task members was interested outside of that. We put those into groups, and then we voted on what our most, where our greatest interest was. These were the first three. So we've broken the team down into sets of teams, so now there are three teams. They'll be looking through that all at the same time. So they'll be reporting to us and sharing information with us and the rest of the team about what they're planning about, about those three subjects. Then we'll sit down with those and whatever that means, that's another thing we're trying to define, what it is we'll be giving to the council and to the city. Once that's worked out and finalized, then we'll move on to the next subjects.
Thank you. And I just wanted to just follow up with, I, I know all too well about getting into a room with a lot of people with a lot of ideas and trying to filter it down into what is your top priorities. And so I just wanted to make sure that if you come across any other needs that you have, that you're sure to communicate those to Mary Ann. I'm sure she'll bring those to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional, Ms. Nosler back.
Councilmember Hoppe took my thing that I wanted to bring up, but first off, I just want to thank you all so much for the work. It's such a huge time commitment that also is incredibly mentally, emotionally taxing, and during COVID, also physically, you know, it's just hard. So this is real work, and it's all because you all are invested in this, so thank you for what you're doing for the community. I do want to make sure that you know that we're here for you if you need resources. And it's just me saying the exact same thing that Councilmember Hoppe did, but we did give you the, the very open-ended task. And so if you ever want to meet with any of us for coffee or a Zoom or whatever your preference is these days, I'm making myself available for that to, to work through some of those open-ended questions that you might be talking through. So thank you once again.
I think you should probably add there that we do know that we're going to be coming back to all of you at various times, and Mary Ann's going to be a great help, and I'll schedule that. But in terms of understanding, for instance, the charter and that kind of thing, you know, we're going to be in Patrick's, Jerry's, but yes, we will be, we will be getting involved with all of you guys. So especially this week, we're finalizing our bylaws, which will help us kind of keep organized amongst ourselves and find ways past the blockages that we encounter. But after that, we are going to be really guiding you, and we're extremely excited to be doing that. So I do think that you guys are going to be coming back to us individually.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to just continue the expressions of gratitude for, for your time, but also for your expertise and for your commitment to making our city a, you know, a better place for everybody. So it's, it's a huge undertaking, and I'm sure you're getting to know each other really well. So, so a couple of my comments have also been touched on. One thing that, that strikes me is that you guys are doing like very deep and systematic work in terms of, you know, looking at how our city, you know, has been built from the ground up and how that's expressing itself and how it functions in a day-to-day way. And that's really big, slow, hard work. So first of all, thank you. You guys might all get your PhDs by the end of this. But I also recognize our city is operating day-to-day right now, and you are, in addition to being on this incredibly important task force, you are also constituents. And please use your constituent voice too to reach out to us. I've learned a lot in the last year from this conversation being brought to the forefront, and please continue to, to reach out and let us know when things are happening that, that maybe need a little bit faster attention. Those are important conversations for, for us to be hearing about. We don't want to, you know, bog down staff with like a nitty-gritty, but if you're seeing something playing out in our community that needs attention, it doesn't have to go through the slow process. Again, you're, our constituents and we're your representatives as, as, you know, residents of the city, so would love to hear from you. The other thing that I'm just thinking about, you know, the year is going to come up relatively quickly from when you guys were tasked with this, and I'm looking forward to seeing those recommendations. When we had the conversation about how to initiate this process, we recognized that this was just the first step of a very long and never-ending process. And so I do hope that, you know, part of what you guys are looking at isn't just the, the areas of interest, but what does it look like after your recommendations have come forward, and what's that sustainable model so that we can continue to have, you know, the expertise that you bring from our community and other community members? So looking forward to hearing that as well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Again, I echo everyone's thanks and just for your commitment. And I just want to also thank you for your patience. Jenny, what you mentioned as far as having all the groups come in from the city, and, and that's something that we all do when we come into council, is we're sort of given that, that education, if you will, on how the city runs. And, and at the time, it sort of seems like, oh, this is so much information. And yet, I was on planning commission for many years before this, and I was always amazed at understanding how structural things really get into our, our society. And it's these, it's these little things that we often walk by all the time. And so I just wanted to appreciate the detail that, that you all are really going into these systems and, and taking apart those structures because I, I just appreciate that attention to detail because that's where, that's where these things get embedded over time. And so thanks.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you. I don't, I don't necessarily have a question, but kudos to the group for undertaking a charter review. You know, that hasn't been done since our incorporation, so we have 50 years of, of, you know, founding documents to go through, and I can only imagine how big of a feat that is. So I just want to thank you all for your time, and I definitely think it's necessary work, and I hope something comes out of it, and, you know, maybe we take some things to the ballot.
Thank you. Additional discussions or comments? Ms. Hulteen.
This is just a small non, it's not a non sequitur. The charter review, I know the first time I read it, there was a glaring, comprehensive and thorough issue in the charter in that it is one gender and one gender only. So I hope that comes up because that's bothering, I actually went through my copy of it and crossed out every he and wrote they or he, she in my, my copy. So I have, I have a gender-inclusive copy of the charter at my house if anyone wants it.
Yeah, I think that was, that was mentioned the first pass at least twice, and it's been mentioned several times since then. Yeah, it's already, it's already in our scope.
Thank you. Additional discussion? I don't see any. Thank you very much for coming tonight to report on your progress. It looks like you've made substantial progress getting the group organized and getting your bylaws ready and, and identifying the issues, how you want to tackle them. So we appreciate the work that you're doing and really look forward to having you come back and, and be able to report back some progress. So thank you very much, and, and as we send you on your way, we say thank you, and we look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
So we have a movie coming. You know, it's good to have. So we will go on to our second item, which is an update on our homeless navigation program. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mary Ann Schilling is here again to introduce, and of course Rebecca Rudeball is here. We'll do the presentation, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Again, Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager, and tonight we are joined by our homeless navigator, Rebecca Rudeball, and she's going to be giving an update on the homeless navigation program, and then she'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Rebecca Rudeball, the homeless navigator for not only Wheat Ridge but for Golden and Edgewater. I wanted to come tonight to provide some updates on some of the successes and the continued efforts at the homeless navigation program. So first, I'm going to be speaking about the first three topics, the I-70 and Kipling Corridor, the severe weather shelter network, client updates, and then I'm going to use some slides and discuss a little bit more about the demographic report that was included in the staff report. So first, the I-70 and Kipling Corridor, as you recall, due to having an increase, many people having an increased presence in the area, we have dedicated more resources to that area. We're seeing that it's been cleaner and less congested. I'm also continuing to conduct weekly outreach in this area as well as other areas that are more congested with the crime prevention team. This outreach consists of contacting individuals living unsheltered and offering resources and basic need items such as socks, water, snacks in the wintertime, maybe gloves or a hat, to try to build rapport and trust. While on outreach, I've been seeing more clients from Denver and the Lakewood area coming more towards the Wheat Ridge area. It appears that many of the individuals who used to frequent that I-70 Kipling area have moved on to different locations but haven't necessarily left the area. I've also found that continuing to build rapport over time with clients while on outreach has maybe more trusting to some of those individuals that are kind of harder to reach. For example, I'm working with one individual who stated that at first, they weren't too sure if they could trust me, but kind of after having me continuously check on them and check in and see how they're doing and provide some of those items over a few months, and watching me work very closely with their friends to get them to housing, they decided that they were finally ready to work with me and that I could be trusted with them. And I kind of just share that story a little bit to show kind of the impact of outreach and how just those little things are building trust within the community and how our homeless population is kind of receiving that. Next, I wanted to speak about the severe weather shelter network. The severe weather shelter network provides shelter for single men, women, and couples without children living on the streets on life-threatening winter nights. They work alongside community organizations to provide the shelter starting October 1st and then going through April 30th. In July, the Jefferson County navigators each met separately with the severe weather shelter network about this upcoming winter season to kind of plan and make it more efficient. And to give a little bit more context on the network, in order for an individual to receive shelter from the severe weather shelter network during a severe weather event, they must be registered with the program in advance. This year, myself and the other navigators in Jefferson County will be working very closely with the severe weather network to ensure that individuals are aware of the registration dates and site locations before the season starts on October 1st. Therefore, any individuals who are pre-registered and are able to, will be able to access a vouchering site when the severe weather network is activated. This year, and I believe it may have been the same last year, the severe weather network is planning to distribute 40 vouchers per severe weather event for both the north and the central regions. So that's 80 total vouchers for all of Jefferson County. And so we have been working very closely with them, and since my position started mid-winter season last year, we've been working closely to make sure that we have better communication. In addition, they, it was a new program for their, them of vouchering individuals through motels instead of churches like it had done, how they've done in previous years. So we're going to be working closely to improve our communication. In the event that in an emergency, when an individual is not registered with the severe weather shelter network on a severe weather day, or they've already run out of vouchers, which may happen, so we will be planning to have those, provide shelter options in Denver as well as Jefferson County has, Jefferson County and the police departments in each municipality have coordinated a plan and when it's appropriate to provide a motel voucher to an individual. Therefore, if it's after hours and an individual, someone is worried about them, we'll be directing them to call the non-emergency line, and an officer will be checking on that individual to determine if it meets the criteria. Next, I kind of wanted to give some client updates since I've been working in this position for about seven months. To date, the homeless navigation program has done, completed an intake with 45 clients, two in Edgewater, 13 in Golden, and 30 in Wheat Ridge. Of that number, four clients have exited the homeless navigation program either to stable housing or due to being deceased. And I'm currently working with five additional clients with either in the apartment search of their pathway towards housing or to gather documentation like their birth certificate, ID, and social security card to apply for a housing voucher. And to provide some more context on how these individuals exited stable housing, one individual in particular, they were first contacted by our police department and our co-responder in a park, and a referral was made to the homeless navigator. And after I spoke with the individual and completed an intake, it was reported that the individual had come to Colorado without an ID, unlimited funds, and they'd run out of their funds and were now living in the park. I worked with this client to get a Greyhound ticket across the country to their home state after confirming they would have a stable place to live if they got back home. And this client was also provided with a gift card to purchase food on their two-day trip home. Additionally, I'm working very closely with another client to get into, additionally, I worked very closely with another client to get into stable housing. So this individual I first met while I was on outreach in the community, and I'd seen them a few times, and then finally, they were like, yes, let's, let's work together. I'd love to receive some services. So after getting connected with them and another partnering agency in the community, I found out this individual already had a housing voucher but was unaware due to losing contact with the other agency. So I was able to work very closely with this client and the partnering agency to assist the client with the apartment search and get them to sign a lease. So they are now stably housed and will have ongoing case, case management support with the agency that holds their voucher. And upon move-in, this client was provided with a moving kit consisting of an air mattress, linens, towels, dishes, silverware, and cooking utensils. And the homeless navigation program received these kits through a donation with the Wheat Ridge Rotary Club. So we worked with them to kind of identify what are the most needed when a client moves into an apartment. In addition to these clients that have exited the program, I'm working with two clients who are in the apartment search or trying to secure a move-in date, and one client to gather documentation and complete an application for a housing voucher. I'm also working very closely with Family Tree to assist a client that I know pretty well and met on outreach with gathering their social security card, birth certificate, and ID to apply for a housing voucher. And then I actually just today had a client sign a lease, so they're very excited. They're currently in medical care and will be for the next two weeks, but since they were able to sign their lease, they'll have a home to go to when they discharge from the hospital. I've been working very hard with this client over the past few months to get housing, to gather all of their vital docs, ID, social security card, and birth certificate, but during a medical emergency which landed this individual in the hospital, the individual left their backpack at a bus stop. And in their backpack was their ID, social security card, and birth certificate that we just worked so hard to get. But luckily, I had, I keep copies of all of the client's documents in case something like this happens. So I'll be able to provide this client with at least copies of their documents so they're not starting over from square one and have to go through the whole process, and it just kind of removes that one very- kind of removes that one barrier that they have a copy of everything and they don't have anything to prove who they are. Now, I'd like to speak a little bit about the demographics report that was included in the staff report and also displayed on the What's Up Wheat Ridge page. This report was pulled from all of the information provided at intake and is self-reported, meaning I don't verify the validity of what the clients tell me. I take them at their word. So the first one I want to speak about is the age range chart. You can see here that most of the clients I serve are in the 45 to 54 age range, followed by the 25 to 34 age range. Right now, coordinated entry or one home, you may hear them used interchangeably, has certain prioritization. And one home or coordinated entry is a collaboration between many agencies to create coordinated housing solutions for persons experiencing homelessness. In the Denver metro area, this is managed by Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, or MDHI. And so those prioritizations, you can see here, they are, so it first starts age 65 and up with a chronic health condition, involvement in the criminal justice system, and length of time homeless. And then the next prioritization is 65 and up, chronic health conditions, and longer lengths of time homeless. And then the third prioritization is ages 55 through 64 with chronic health conditions and criminal justice involvement. Then ages 55 through 64 who have a chronic health condition. And then ages 55 through 64 who have criminal justice involvement. So you can see that a small amount of the people that are being prioritized is in the system of roughly 5,400 people in the Denver metro area. And I can go back to the, just to kind of give you an idea of those who are and aren't being prioritized. So that means that it may be longer, if ever, before these individuals could be matched with a voucher inside the one home system. And again, these prioritizations are set by Metro, Metro Homeless Denver Initiative. And so it's up to them of kind of what that, and we might see them changing as the pandemic changes. I think these were just set for COVID-specific prioritizations. Next, I want to kind of speak about are the gender chart. So you can see that most of the clients I serve, 66% of them are male. And so this could be for a variety of different reasons. Some, one reason could be that typically sometimes females can find, it may be easier for females to find shelter, whether it's couch surfing with someone, or staying with family or friends. Next, I wanted to speak about the disabled charts. So you can see that 80% of the clients I'm working with have a disability of some sort. This could include a physical disability, developmental disability, being diagnosed with HIV or AIDS, having a chronic health condition, so a condition with your liver, kidney, lungs, or heart lasting three months or more, a mental health problem, or a substance abuse problem. And per HUD, the definition of disabled, if a person answers that they have one of the previously mentioned conditions and answer that it's going to be long-term, meaning impede their ability to hold down a job or live independently, then they're considered to have a disability. So that's 36 out of the 45 clients I'm working with currently are considered disabled. So that just, that means that there can be more barriers to get these individuals to stable housing. Next, I want to speak about the mental health chart. You can see here that 66, 62.2, excuse me, reported they struggle with some sort of mental health struggle. And sometimes when I, again, I just want to say when it, it is self-reported. So sometimes when I am meeting with a client, and in my professional opinion, they are displaying some kind of symptoms or presenting with some kind of mental health concern. But if they say they don't have a mental health concern and they don't think it's going to be long-term, that's what I mark. So I take them at their word of that. And then next, the substance abuse chart. So we have 8.89 reported they struggle with alcohol. And so that's four people out of the 45. 13.33 say they struggle with drug abuse, so that's six people. And then 2.22, which is one person, struggles with both alcohol and drug. And again, it's all self-reported. So if I know an individual is struggling with a substance misuse, and they may have lost their job before, so if they don't think that, we'll definitely have some more of a conversation about if they, whether or not it's a problem and kind of guide them. But if they say no, then that's what I report. So next, I wanted to speak about our chronically homeless population. And this is the population that we tend to see the most out in the community. So we have 42.22% reported they are chronically homeless. And so defined by HUD, if someone has a disability, has, and they have to have a disability, and they've been living unsheltered or in emergency shelter for longer than 12 months, or they've had four separate occasions of homelessness in the last four years totaling 12 months, then they meet this definition of chronically homeless. So that means 19 individuals that I'm working with meet this definition of being chronically homeless. So they, and we know the longer someone has experienced homelessness, the more barriers they may face, and the harder it is to get them towards housing. Next is the income. Those 12 individuals who have an income of 10,000 to 20,000 are most likely those individuals who are receiving SSI, Social Security income, or Social Security Disability Insurance, SSDI. You can see that nine people receive less than 10,000 a year, and 22 people don't have any sort of income. So if these individuals aren't holding a housing voucher, or they don't have a stable place to stay where they can hold down employment and afford housing on their own, the, there may be limited resources for this population and the housing towards, or the pathway towards housing may be a little bit longer than some of those other individuals. And when completing an intake, everything, again, just want to kind of reiterate that everything is self-report. But everything that a client discloses is very important in determining which resources may be appropriate, or if they qualify for an available housing voucher. For example, if a client's under the age of 25, they fall within that youth age range, and there might be more resources available to them at that time. Or if a client discloses that they struggle with substance misuse or have been in jail, there might be different vouchers available at that time. And I say different vouchers available at a time. For example, Foothills Regional Housing sometimes has NED vouchers at the very beginning of the year, non-elderly and disabled, but they're kind of a first-come, first-served. So once they're gone, they're gone for the year, and we have to wait for the next year. So depending on the vouchers available at that time, it could look differently. And all of these demographics that are reported help me identify what barriers an individual might be facing towards their pathway to housing. If you're interested in more breakdowns of the demographics collected, you can reference the demographics report attached in the staff report, or visit the What's Up Wheat Ridge page. As each client is different, the homeless navigation program continues to work with individuals to provide the appropriate resources and identify a pathway towards housing. And as you guys have heard from some of the stories, that can look different for everyone. It's very individually based. Since I started with this program, we've had some successes with getting clients into permanent and stable housing. We're continuing to conduct weekly outreach in the community, build relationships within the community, and add new clients to the caseload. So due to this, we're feeling optimistic about the program's future success. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good, good report. Let me open this up for questions. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. Thank you, Rebecca, for your presentation. I have a few questions. Well, I'll just make it two. First off, on the preregistration for the, for the emergency housing, emergency shelters during weather events, have you considered doing a preregistration, like, event where maybe you have other volunteers go out with you and hit several different areas to try to preregister as many people as possible before that, before we are in a severe weather?
Yeah, and that's kind of what we, that was one of the big discussion points when I met with Severe Weather Shelter Network, because they are their own agency, and they help, they give out all of the vouchers. And so I wouldn't be able to register people for them. But we're going to try to work together and do events like this, maybe at like the Rising in Arvada, or Mean Street Ministries, or places that have more day services and kind of bring people in, as well as it's going to be something when I'm going out on outreach, making sure everyone who is interested, or even if they're not, just encouraging them to sign up in case something happens. Because we do get a lot of individuals who, they're kind of, they don't want to sign up, but then, you know, if we're getting a huge blizzard or the temperatures drop below zero, then it's kind of too late. So we're going to do a lot of work preemptively this year.
So, and to sign up for that, sorry, a follow-up on that, on that. No, I have three questions, sorry. To, to just kind of follow up with that, to sign up for that, for the preregistration, is that something that they have to have internet access to do, or is it a phone call, or?
They have to go in-person. And then I believe Severe Weather Shelter Network, I'm not exactly sure every piece that they go through, but I think they do, an intake for the HMIS system, the Homeless Management Information System that I use, so that they can track the services and who they're providing the shelter to. And then as well as, I think, like, rules and regulations that they need to follow when they're being vouchered, when , yeah, when they voucher them.
And then my last question is, have you, have you been able to reach out to some of our community centers, our churches, and maybe our, our library, to see, well, I know that specifically, we made some changes in the code when we adopted the new building codes that would allow churches to house for severe weather. But also, I think like the community centers and the libraries could be places where there could be some outreach for donation centers. So I was just wondering if you have had any success with either of those?
To clarify, so for keeping people, are you asking if we've been able to reach out to the churches to see if they will house people for severe weather?
Yes.
We haven't done that. I believe Severe Weather Shelter Network has reached out to some of the churches, and it's up to them. But I don't know that they're willing to do that this year. And from my experience of speaking with a lot of the churches, they've had a lot of concern around the pandemic and what that looks like. And so they've kind of been a little bit more hands-off. But we can continue to explore that idea.
And council member, we've been, the police chief and I, and now Sergeant Pickett, are trying to organize the faith-based community a little bit more in the city. And unfortunately, we've been working at that for several years and haven't had tons of luck. Not that the churches aren't doing things on their own. I know a lot of them are, and doing things that we don't know about. But it would be nice if we could work together as a community so we knew what different churches are doing, so that we could refer people to those churches. But we're trying again, and I think we have another meeting set up soon. I think our last meeting, we only had one church show up. So we're, we're going to continue trying and provide them with a, an ask and of how they can help us as a community, so they know exactly what they're getting into. So we're going to continue working on it. And again, the churches, not trying to throw any of the churches under the bus, because I think they all are doing something on their own. And, and it's, it'd be good, though, if we could work together to, so that we're not duplicating services.
So if I were, if I were a member of a, of a church, and I wanted my church to be involved, who would I, who would I send the, the volunteers or the leadership, or who would I send them to, to speak with? Would I, would I say, I, I've got a group with my church, and we want to help get the faith-based community in Wheat Ridge organized? Who do I contact? Would I contact you? Would I contact Rebecca? Would I contact the chief?
Sure, any three of those. You know, we're trying to work with the leadership in the churches right now to organize through them, through them, instead of, you know, I'm sure there's volunteer groups from different churches that have been active and doing different things in the city. But right now, we're working through the church leadership to try to get organized that way. But yeah, we'll take any, any resource we can get. If there's different groups that want to contact us, we'd be happy to work with them.
Ms. Noslerick?
Thanks, Rebecca, so much. I have a few questions, too. How many people do we think are experiencing homelessness in Jefferson County? I know your survey was who you talked to, but I just kind of wanted to get an idea, or maybe it doesn't have to be Jeff, whatever you might have the numbers for, if it's the three municipalities or?
I don't think, we haven't done an intensive count since we did the comprehensive count back in August of 2019, which broke it down by each municipality, and then Jefferson County as a whole. We did do the point in time, the pick count in January, I think actually February, excuse me. But it wasn't as comprehensive. We didn't, we only counted those individuals, and they activated Severe Weather Shelter Network. So we only counted individuals who are in motels and not those individuals in the shelter. And I can get those numbers for you.
You don't have to do it right now, but just, it'd be nice to just see how many were sampled and then like?
Right. And I don't know that, like I said, it was last done in 2019, and we have been seeing more people coming from the Denver area. So I would anticipate those numbers maybe a bit higher.
Okay. And then I just had a couple of questions about the, like, voucher program. Do we, so you said there's 80, 80 vouchers available on, let's say there's a night, there's a blizzard or something. Do we need more vouchers? Like, is 80 enough? And if we had more vouchers, are there places to, to send people?
That's a good question. 80 vouchers definitely does not cover the amount of individuals experiencing homelessness in Jefferson County. But since they are their own agency, I think they're funded by grants. And so their grant money determines how many vouchers they can have, as well as kind of running into, you know, motel availability on Severe Weather Shelter Net, Network.
Yeah. Because that was my next question, is just how do we get more vouchers then? So I, I think I might follow up with you, because I, I think there's an opportunity for us to see, to get creative on it. Because I know that some of the other council members and I have talked about this, where on the nights of really bad, bad weather, or days or weeks of bad weather, we've had constituents wanting to, you know, donate money to get people housed, because they're concerned for people's safety. And I, I just wonder, with the faith-based work, and maybe it's not vouchers are the answer, but where we can find that next step. So I'll probably start bugging you about that.
Yeah. And I think that, from my understanding, I mean, I was not working in Jefferson County previous years before the pandemic, but my understanding is they were able to house way more people when they were helping people in the churches for severe weather, because they didn't have to limit the numbers and then find ways to help them as well.
Got it. And then, I'm sorry, I have a couple more questions. Okay, so then, the severe weather, it, those are all, at least in Colorado, when we're experiencing like the freezing cold temperatures. But what do we have for folks during the 102-degree day in the heat? Is there a severe weather, is there anything for those heat waves?
There's not at this time. I think there was talk, but they ultimately decided not to do it. And then we've also been referring people to the day shelters, like the Rising in Arvada, Mean Street Ministries, or Recovery Works, to just kind of get out of the heat for the time being.
Okay, great. I mean, not great, but I realize that you're finding other solutions. And then, I think that's all I had. I also had a question about where we were with the faith-based organizations and what we were doing to, to work that. I think, at least from what I'm hearing from a lot of constituents, and I think a lot of other council members are hearing the same thing, is that it seems like there's a spike in the number of homeless people experiencing homelessness in our community. But I would also say that Wheat Ridge residents overwhelmingly know that the answer isn't to kick everyone out. It's to find, they want to help. And so we're so, so grateful that you're here, Rebecca, and I just hope that we can work together to continue to find solutions. And the data was really interesting. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Rebecca, thank you for all your great work. The first time I interacted with you was during one of the severe weather, and you were incredibly responsive. And I can just tell you bring, you bring your best to your job. And I'm excited to see that you're making an impact. I'm curious, well, first of all, in your presentation, there's the abbreviation HOH, and I don't know what that means.
Head of Household.
Head of Household, okay, thank you. Secondly, I know that this is really happening at the county level, but you did have a couple of people who self-identified as veterans, and the county is working towards zero unhoused veterans. And I'm just wondering if you could provide an update just on how that coordinated effort's going, and if there's any, like, specific opportunities or tools around that?
As you've stated, we are doing Built for Zero, and that is ending homelessness by identifying by identifying a subpopulation, and then exiting all of those people and getting them housed, and then focusing on another subpopulation, and right now, we've identified veterans as our subpopulation. Um, so right now, we've been working very closely with the VA, um, to figure out if that individual does qualify for funding through the VA, since there is a lot more funding that way. Um, and so one of those clients, who was a veteran, did end up getting housing, but without the VA money, because he didn't qualify. They have to get their duty to fourteen, I believe it is. Um, and so the VA will help them with that, and then they have a special, um, kind of this one-home coordinated entry system that I referenced, with the four thousand five hundred, there's a separate list just for veterans, that they're going through and trying to identify and try to work right through.
Great, well, again, thank you, uh, thank you for what you're doing, and also, you know, the stories that you told tonight, I think one of the most important things you're doing is building trust, and, uh, I think that's, that's a critical element to this, so, um, I just, we're really lucky to have you, and, and thanks for all the work you're doing.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Rebecca. Incredible stuff, uh, that you're, that you're doing, and, and thanks for all the data. Um, I just want to go back to the voucher stuff for just a second, and the, and the cold weather sheltering, and this might be a question for, for Mr. Graff as well. But, um, are, do churches or other, or any large building that is able to accommodate like that, um, is there any voucher that they, do they get any payment for opening up their doors in situations like that, much like the hotel gets a voucher?
Not to my knowledge. In the past, um, what they would do is they, each region, so the region in the north, and then the central region, um, and it's being discussed in Golden right now, but they're still trying to figure out if they have enough support out there. But it would be three different churches, and they would take turns either hosting the individuals, um, during that severe weather event, and then their church volunteers will provide food. Um, and it's my understanding that with the motel vouchering, those same churches are still volunteering, and they're just doing the food, and then trying to help coordinate and moderate behavior, um, if needed at the motels. So I don't think they do get any compensation, I think it's more of a volunteer effort.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we might have more involvement if, if, you know, we're, we're sort of assuming that hotels are going to get paid, and, and maybe we ought to think about how we, uh, if, if there's something, because, as we know, faith-based organizations are generally decreasing in, in, um, constituency, and it seems like that might be a, an interesting option to, to think about, and, and then have more available beds, certainly in these crisis situations, if, if they also know that they're going to, uh, have something back. Um, so, just a thought, maybe, maybe if anybody wants to talk about that later, but, um, I ha, I, I, and I apologize, Councilor Hulteen, I've got a, I'm going to go a different place, uh, before we come back to that, if that's okay? I'm going to ask one more question. Um, sorry. Um, totally different subject. Um, I'm just curious, we, we received an email about some, uh, some personal things that were happening on a street this week, um, specifically some defecation, and, um, and I was just curious, could you, could you talk to us for a moment about what resources are available on the street? Like, if, if you have to use the bathroom, you know, because I, I was thinking about what, what parks have bathrooms, and where they are, and if you could walk in the rec center and go to the bathroom, and I'm not sure if, guess you can. Um, but just sort of, what are the, what are those things that you, how do, how you interact with people around, um, showers, bathroomings, just this, those kind of things? I just wanted to know more information about it.
Definitely. The restrooms are a bit tricky, um, like you said, there's parks, um, sometimes they will have quarter toilets that won't be locked at nighttime, um, and then there's, um, businesses, if they have a restroom, that I believe people are using, um, and I don't typically go into too much detail with people about that unless they're asking, where can I find a restroom?
Yeah.
Um, so typically, I refer people to The Rising in Arvada and the day centers in Lakewood. I do have a partnership with the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, so I can provide shower vouchers, and the homeless navigation program pays for it, um, and people are really liking that right now. Um, and then in Arvada, The Rising has, they can take a free shower, get some clothing, they have, um, a meal, nurses on-site from stride, um, Jefferson Center of Mental Health on-site, um, and then the same thing kind of down in Lakewood at Mean Street Ministries, and then Recovery Works that just opened up, they both offer showers as well. So depending on where the client stays the most, and kind of what area they kind of typically hang out in, or what's easier for them to get to, I kind of pick, um, you know, where they stay, and then what resources they're looking for, like those things, and it's typically one of those day centers, um, if it's something like showers, um, and things like that. Um, or sometimes if an individual is really interested in mental health, um, and they're kind of struggling to make it to their appointments and call and check up on it, um, The Rising has a kiosk where they can go in, and then a on-call therapist just comes on, and they can meet with them at any time. Um, additionally, on Tuesdays, they have a therapist up there, too, um, and so that's just one thing, to kind of remove that barrier of remembering when appointments are.
Sure.
Um, and so those are big resources.
Yeah, okay. Um, do people generally know where bathrooms are, or?
Um, I don't want to speak for everyone, I'm sure, I think some individuals do have an idea, but it may just depend if, you know, they're staying in an area and the restroom is far away from them, or if they have a medical condition, or something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I'd be happy to tell, and no one's asked me specifically too much about a restroom, it seems like people know where they can find a restroom, um, but I'd be happy to provide that if anyone asks.
Okay, I, I was just curious, thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hoppy, and then Ms. Hulteen.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so, uh, so Patrick and Rebecca, my, so, my question is, do we have any city-owned property, and I'm thinking maybe like the drop-in basketball court at the Anderson Building, or something like that, where we could utilize for severe weather? So, if the faith-based community at this time in Wheat Ridge is, because what I hear is there are a lot of resources, not in Wheat Ridge, Golden, Lakewood, Arvada. It, you have to be able to travel to those places, or to find, uh, a, a ride there, and, um, I do know in severe weather that our police department will, um, help somebody locate and drive people to the, one of those places, but I don't really hear anything in our community. And so, what I'm wondering is if there is, um, is there opportunity where we could utilize one of our buildings that we own, and then utilize perhaps donations and, and volunteers, much like, much like the churches would, but only we would do it in our, in our own buildings? Is there an opportunity for that?
Yeah, I mean, I, you could, I think we could almost do anything that we want, um, if we have the resources and have volunteers, um, it's, I don't think it's just as easy as, as finding a location and, and asking, you know, telling people to come, right? I mean, it takes a lot of management of volunteers and, and everything else that's rip, comes with it. Could we do it? I think we could. Um, it would take additional resources, um, it would remove a, um, an asset from the community that our public, their community may be used to using, um, for different reasons, so you'd have to be okay with that. Um, but, um, I think, you know, we're Wheat Ridge, I think we can do anything. I think I heard that recently, and I don't know, Ali, Ali always tell me that.
That's good. Uh, Ms. Hulteen.
I love, we're Wheat Ridge, and we can do anything, that sounds dangerous. Um, to, to Councilmember Weaver's idea around how we can incentivize partners, um, because I agree, like, we, a lot of these services are, you know, concentrated in Arvada and Lakewood, and, and some of that with good reason, um, but a lot of those are, are really spearheaded by the faith community, and I know the city's been, been doing its best to try and get that moving. Um, could we, when we do outreach to churches, to, to talk to them about this, could the city offer security to them? Um, because I know that that's the church in my neighborhood who has thought about this, um, that's one of the things that, like, that becomes a hard cost for them. They, they can get a lot of volunteers, but, um, is that something that we could, we could possibly offer as an incentive to, to faith community?
Yeah, I think so, and that's the intent of, of trying to organize, um, the faith-based community to work with us directly, so that we can build those partnerships, because we understand they can't do everything. Um, as, uh, Councilmember Weaver mentioned, the congregations are decreasing, and, and they don't have a lot of money, and, um, we, we are working, um, on looking at potentially a safe parking lot, um, for which several cities have done, um, to provide a place for, for, for homeless folks who are living in their vehicles, um, and we, we have some, definitely, in our community. Um, you'll see them, uh, moving around and parking and, and living in different locations, um, but there's Safe Parking Initiative, which is an organization out of Denver, or, I don't know if it's a Colorado organization, but they work directly with churches that have a lot or a space, and, um, either they or the city can provide security, the fencing, um, they provide wraparound services for those individuals, it's a secure, locked environment, um, and so we're, we're looking at, um, that, we need to find a location and a space, and, um, but there, there's a willingness to do those types of things.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to take a moment and say thank you for all the work you're doing. Rebecca, this is obviously not a, uh, situation where you're getting thanked every day by the individuals you're working with, potentially, maybe you are, uh, but it, it does take a lot of effort, and I really appreciate the effort that you've put into this so far, and, uh, this is really a matter of life and death, as you mentioned in that report, and, uh, I think it's, uh, it, when we talk about, you know, the Severe Weather Shelter Network, um, as we go through the pandemic, uh, that's kind of a, an overlying issue that I don't know will be able to overcome, but, um, I do like the idea of taking what would otherwise go to the motel vouchers, and putting that resource towards something, um, that doesn't necessarily go to the motels, but may provide that same service, so, um, I think we should look at something like that. And, um, the, uh, as far as getting people in touch with Foothills Regional Housing, uh, are you putting in them, in touch with them, or, or are they doing their own outreach, or how does that, uh, process work?
Are you referring to the NED vouchers that I-
The NED vouchers, sorry.
Yeah, um, so we work very closely with Foothills Regional Housing, um, and we have a coworker in the Jefferson County Collaborative of Navigators, um, and so we would make directly the referral to Foothills, and then from there, kind of act as a liaison between the client and Foothills. At this time, I don't think Foothills has any vouchers that would be eligible for this, um, current clientele, but when they do, then we'll work directly with them and kind of do that liaison, referring partners.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Stites.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you, Rebecca, for all the work you're doing. Um, you have forty-five clients, correct? Um, do you feel like that's capacity for you? Do you feel like you could take on more? Um, and if so, how many more, I guess? Um, um, you know, not trying to add on to your workload, just trying to figure out what that looks like, and, uh, I guess, Ms. Nosler, Rebecca asked earlier, how many people in Jeffco we have experiencing homelessness, homelessness, or how many people we have in Wheat Ridge experiencing homelessness, and how much more we need to add to that to solve the problem, I guess? I mean, we're not going to solve the problem, but how much more can we help?
Um, at this time, I feel like I'm pretty close to my capacity, and it really just depends, depends on the clientele, so I can't, I don't know that I'd feel comfortable giving just one number, because if I get a lot of clients that are, you know, higher acuity or lower acuity, it just depends on the time I'm spending with them, as well as in the other cities, if I, because I, for example, I had a client, I was working, like, in Golden, um, and they needed a lot of kind of support with that housing, um, and kind of going through any kind of application or assessment that they needed to do to get the housing, so I was spending a lot of time going with Golden and working with this one individual. So if I have individuals on my caseload who don't require too much extra support, um, you know, I may be able to take more, um, and I think we're just gonna, we're kind of seeing what that capacity is, but I would say right now, I'm pretty close to our capacity.
Thank you.
Ms. Doosman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, so I kind of wanted to touch on that a little bit, um, on the periphery. Could you kind of discuss, uh, the challenges, uh, that you see in serving three communities, and how you maybe split your time amongst the three? It, does it just depend on your caseload? Maybe give us a better idea of how that works out?
Definitely. Um, depending, well, I definitely have times each month or each week that I'm in each city. For example, I go to homeless court in Wheat Ridge once a month, and Edgewater once a month, and Golden once a month. So I'm in court once a month, but then additionally, um, Edgewater, I kind of go every other week-ish on outreach out there, because it's such a small community, and we're not seeing too many people. Um, and Golden, I go out every Thursday, um, to their safe parking lot, and they're kind of trying to set it up more of a one-stop shop, kind of like The Rising I referenced, they now have Jefferson Center of Mental Health out there with a therapist on Thursdays. Um, additionally, they provide showers to their safe parking guests, um, and they kind of have a, they provide a meal during that time, so it's kind of a good place for me to set up and let people know in the community, this is where Rebecca's going to be if you want to check in with her and don't have contact information, and removing that barrier. Um, and then in Wheat Ridge, I outreach, um, at least once a week, a lot of times I'm kind of in the community, working with clients, and kind of outreaching other clients that they're hanging out with at the same time. Um, so right now, I'm spending the majority of my time in Wheat Ridge, um, just because that's where most of my clients are, but I'm still going out to Golden and Edgewater, depending on, um, where the clients are, and if I see that I'm getting more clients in Golden, then I may be going out to Golden more. Um, I think the biggest thing is just contact information, so if someone doesn't have contact information, and I don't have a reliable person or someone, did they find a release of information stating I can contact them? Um, sometimes it's going out to Golden, finding this individual, just for a few questions, um, if it's something very important for housing, or, then write a doc application or something like that. Um, and I would say that's the biggest challenge in Wheat Ridge as well. Kind of all across all three cities is people not having access, um, to a phone or internet, um, and so just finding those individuals.
Thank you, Rebecca, and thank you for all your hard work, I really appreciate it.
Councilmember, um, we're also, we're having discussions with, um, Golden and Edgewater on what their needs are going to be for next budget, next year, and there may be some, Golden may be bringing on some additional staff, which will free up Rebecca, um, in Wheat Ridge, um, and if they don't, if they still want to maintain this partnership, um, we, we'll be bringing back some asks for, um, additional resources, um, next year. We, we're still waiting on Golden, Edgewater, kind of make some decisions, um, because that determines what we need to do here. We, we definitely need some additional resources, we talked about a housing, housing navigation, navigator, um, I think at one of our last updates, and, um, I think council all supported that, but we don't know if we're going to need a full-time position to do that, depending on what Ed, or, yeah, Edgewater and Golden decides, so we'll have some more information soon, hopefully.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when you give the clients the vouchers, how long are the vouchers good for?
Are you referring to the housing vouchers, or a motel voucher?
Motel.
Um, it's really client-specific. So, for example, if I have a client discharging from the hospital, and they need some more medical respite, or, um, you know, for example, I had a client who had a broken ankle last year, and they were trudging through the snow, and their cast was just getting deteriorated. So during one of the snowstorms, I put them up, just during the severe weather event. Um, so it just depends situation-based, so there's no set time limit on it. Uh, typically, we want to get people, it's, because emergency vouchering in motels, um, we, as the navigators, kind of think that's last resort, if there's no other resources available, so we might voucher them for a few days while we're working on another sheltering option for them. Um, and then the housing vouchers, most of them, the clients that I've referenced that have housing vouchers, they're lifetime vouchers that come with case management, so there's either, um, within the one-home coordinated entry system, there's permanent supportive, and those are the lifetime vouchers, um, and then there's also rapid rehousing, which is an eighteen-to-twenty-four-month program, um, with case management, but the idea is it kind of helps you get back on your feet, and then you're able to be self-sustainable without the voucher after twenty-four months max.
And so for the housing vouchers, then where does the money come from to pay for that?
I believe it comes from the Division of Housing, um, or HUD, um, or from a federal level that has been given out, um, to the one-home coordinated entry.
Okay, so that, um, the building, the Caesar Building that is being-
Caesar Square, yep.
-worked on, yeah? Is that a place where people would be able to go to, or?
No, that, those are, um, those go through the Jefferson, or the Foothills Regional Housing, maybe Zach can speak to that, um, um, through their, I guess, voucher program, they have to qualify, um, income restricted, um-
Okay.
-and qualify based on the income.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your work.
Now, I found the data on, um, the two thousand nineteen, um, comprehensive homeless count, um, there was nine hundred ninety-seven, um, persons experiencing homelessness in Jefferson County, um, but that, that's a one-day count, right? That's, that was still a one-day count, so that doesn't catch everybody. Um, that's who, who was, who was counted that day. That's who was, who was counted that day.
Rebecca, I had a, had a question for you. You've been in this position since January and this is a new position that we've, you know, sort of joined with our county partners in making it happen. I sort of wanted to get a feel for on a, on a personal level, is this, do you feel this is a successful outreach? Do you feel safe when you go out to meet clients? And then sort of as a follow-up to that, are there other, are there other resources that we might be able to employ? And how do you coordinate with other, other navigators in the county?
Definitely. I'll first speak to outreach. So when I go out on outreach, typically I go out with the crime prevention team. And so I always have an officer with me and I feel very safe. And then from there, especially if it's an individual that I've met a few times and starting to build that relationship, I'll typically meet with them in a very public place where there's lots of people around. And then I always let my supervisor know where I'm at and how long it's going to be. Additionally, sometimes I'll meet people at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. So I don't think there's any time where I've really felt unsafe. And additionally, a lot of individuals, they, I'm trying to help them and offer them, you know, free items. And so they tend to be a little bit nicer and more trusting of me rather than others. And regarding the navigators, so we meet, all of the Jefferson County navigators meet once a week. And so that's a time for us to kind of talk about what's going on in each of our municipalities as well as if we have any hard case conferences, like a client we're kind of stuck on and asking for additional resources, then we can all kind of chip in and provide anything that we know about and kind of help each other with those clients. Because in the end, we all have the same goal of helping clients get off the street.
Thank you. And I know, I think I may have heard the question, but I'm not sure I registered the answer. If, if our citizens wanted to help either with financial donations or clothing or those types of things, is there, is there an avenue that they might be able to do that?
Yes, they'd be able, on our WhatsApp Wheat Ridge page regarding homelessness, we have a link for our donation through the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation where we're taking financial donations there. And those items, those donations will be used on items like that. We may, seasonally throughout the year, we'll have drives where we'll be asking for the community to help during that time.
Thank you. Great discussion. Do we have, do we have more, more discussion to have or more questions for Rebecca? Great, great report. I guess we, I guess we either worn the council down or worn, you know, worn, worn me down. So, and, and I see that you've, you've got a lot of energy. So thank you very much. Great report. Great work, I think, we would all agree. Great work that you're doing in the, in the city and on behalf to a, to a great, you know, a deserving piece of clientele that, that are our citizens too. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that, that gets us through our two agenda items. I'll go to staff reports and start with Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My glasses are fogging up, so I can't talk and see. I'm going to take this off real quick. But I, I do want to talk about this and I think you've all been seeing the news and hearing the news that unfortunately COVID is increasing across the country and, and here in Jefferson County. Jefferson County fortunately has a 35.5%, 7, I'm sorry, 73.5% vaccination rate, which is great. However, our COVID incident rate is, is climbing. Let's see, back on July 12th, it was 23.3 per 100,000 population. As of last Friday, it's jumped up to 74.4. So it's a pretty big jump. Fortunately, our hospitalizations are staying fairly low, I believe, here in, in Colorado. But you've heard stories across the country, it's, it's at pandemic levels across the country. So CDC has recently released some recommendations that we mask in public, indoor public meetings. So Jefferson County is also following that and the state is. Jefferson County Health Department, we have another meeting scheduled with them on Thursday to get more information on what their next steps may be. I know they, they are looking at some, as the state has recently some mandatory vaccinations for potentially county employees. The state issued that, I think September 20th is the effective date of that. All state employees will have to be vaccinated or be tested, I think, twice, twice weekly and wear masks and socially distance. So there's, there's a lot of things happening here in the next few weeks and just trying to get all the new information. Other than that, I hope there's not going to be any severe restrictions that are going to shut our economy down. Sounds like nobody wants to go there. But I guess our question for council is if this continues, we have a regular meeting next week back up on the dais. Is everybody comfortable going back on the dais for a meeting? Seeing, shaking heads? With, with a mask? Would, would prefer a mask? We can, we do have the Plexiglas dividers. I don't know if you want those or not. It's pretty tight up there. Nope. Okay. Tonight, we, we did spread the tables out just in abundance of caution until we had this discussion with council on what your preferences were moving forward. Yes, Val?
I, I just wanted to say that I'm really, that I'm helping people around my desk with, have experienced COVID or under the, of, you know, to be vaccinated. And so are you wearing your mask? I'm not saying, but it's a, it's a, it's a, and so I am comfortable with everyone wearing masks on the dais. But I need everybody else to come on the dais as well. Otherwise, I won't be able to do this. So.
We can still hear you. That's, so again, we have a meeting Thursday with, with Dr. Comstock with Jeffco Health. So I'll have more information after that on what the county's next steps may be and have more up-to-date case numbers. So hopefully it's not increasing. You know, they, they feel fairly confident that because we are so highly vaccinated in Jefferson County that this will be manageable. But they are recommending very strongly that we bring back some of the social distancing and mask-wearing as much as possible.
And washing your hands.
And washing your hands. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
I just, I just have a question, I guess. Did it, did it look like everybody was nodding their head to being on the dais with masks on? And should we, do we need to have a further discussion on that? Or, you're looking good on that. Okay, awesome. So then what I would like to bring up is if you feel like your position on the dais's microphone doesn't pick you up as well, and Val, I'm, I'm actually thinking about your microphone specifically. And, Mr. Mayor, your microphone last week was, was not picking, picking you up as well? So I wonder if you feel like your microphone is not as good as like, it seems like our study session microphones seem to be really good. Will you maybe let Patrick know so that maybe they can look at switching those out? Because it's, I'm thinking those microphones that aren't as good and we have our masks on, it might be a little bit more difficult for, to be able to have the communication.
See, I just need to know how to use the microphone. Is that what you're telling me, Janice?
Maybe you're not turning it on. I don't know.
You know, you got to.
Get the microphone on.
And they are designed to work better if you speak, if you're right.
You gotta, you gotta get up to the microphone to speak to it.
They're designed that way so they don't pick up background sound, so.
Is everybody teaching me how to use a microphone tonight?
That's everybody. That's for everybody.
I honestly feel like that position always on the dais, that microphone has always been quiet. But it was strange that Bud's was, I mean, he was right on the microphone last week and it was strange that it wasn't as loud as usual. So I just, just bringing up the technical, talking through a mask may be a better microphone.
And it, and it is, if you, you know, if you ever go and look at the tape of our meetings, it's disconcerting if, if people are talking and don't earn up to the microphone because you, you miss the conversation. And it, and we've been, we've been good coming back into chambers. Our videographers are being more attentive at getting, getting, focusing on the, on the person that's speaking, which I think is really good for our, for the viewing audience. So we, we may want to practice, I guess, smiling through your mask in the, in the, in the microphone, so. Additional, let's see, that was your staff report? Brief staff report? Okay, we'll go to elected officials' reports. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to invite the public to National Night Out tomorrow. Wheat Ridge Police Department is hosting it from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at Hayward Park, which is the park right next to the municipal building. You know, my kids and I had a really good time the last time we were able to gather at an event like this. And so I just wanted to invite everybody to come out tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
I'm super excited about tomorrow night. I think last time I got a rainbow unicorn painted on my face. I also want to make an announcement. We are two weekends away from the Carnation Festival and I have a big thing to announce. The pie contest, the pie contest is on. So Wheat Ridge, get your pie on, okay? Saturday, bring your pies. We're, we're going to be judging pies and then we're going to be selling those pies for some good cause, I'm not sure yet. But you will get to taste Wheat Ridge's best. So bring it. All that stuff will be posted on the Carnation Festival site by tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. Let's see here. Also tomorrow night is the Lutheran Community Meeting Open House. It is here at City Hall, so you can flip back and forth between Neighbors Night Out. You can get your face painted and then come learn more about how the master planning process is going for Lutheran. And then, in fact, I'm going to encourage people to do that. That would be a really fun community meeting. And then I also just want to thank the Wheat Ridge Police Department. I attended Coffee with a Cop last week at Stylist and Crate in District Two. And it was very well-attended both by our police department as well as the community. And it's just really great to see our police officers interacting with the community. They were being sort of, they, they had more pictures taken than I think I've ever seen taken in a coffee shop. They were, they were very popular, but I also heard a lot of really good conversations and just appreciate everyone from Chief Murtha on down who, who came to that. And people really appreciated the coffee. So it's, it's a great program and I just appreciate you bringing it to District Two.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' reports. And I will say that we have our treasurer, Mr. Miller, with us. We have our clerk, Mr. Kirkpatrick. And I want to make sure you all are included in the loop in our official reports. Now I'm going to turn and see if you have anything for tonight.
A reminder that you can pick up petitions to solicit signatures to run for mayor or member of council, starting at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall tomorrow morning, August 3rd. When you do that, and anyone does that, that is a public act indicating that you have declared yourself a candidate and it will be posted on the city's website within the next day. So tomorrow is the day, the first day. I also wanted to make a brief comment about the homeless navigators' report. Everyone in this room understands that mental health is a major part of this problem of people experiencing homelessness. The numbers that we rely upon from self-report, and I'm not criticizing Rebecca on any level because she writes down what she hears. Self-report of mental health is a notoriously bad indicator of whether that individual has a mental health issue. They live in a world where their behavior is normal for them. It may cause them to be all sorts of depressed and unhappy or whatever. But nonetheless, we need to ask ourselves the question, what role does mental health treatment play in the long-term solution to homelessness? And if we don't, we're missing half of the boat. My professional peers would not allow me to get away without mentioning that fact. And it needs to be a bigger part of the calculus than I hear now. Thank you all very much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Is there any more business to come before the council tonight? Then we will stand adjourned. We will be here next week in a city council meeting. So have a safe week.